All right, the time is now six o'clock. I'll go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Tracy has taken.
Recording in progress.
And we'll go ahead and send for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you, everybody. Next up is item three, which is to review, revise, and approve tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Seconded by Trustee Witcher. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving tonight's agenda as written, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to approve the minutes. We have two minutes to approve. First up is to approve the special board meeting of November 12, 2024. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Trustee Walsh. Seconded by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the special board meeting minutes, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up are the regular board meeting minutes of November 12. Is there a trustee to approve those regular board meeting minutes? Moved by Trustee Walsh. Seconded by Trustee Witt. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving those regular board meeting minutes, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is public comments. So the public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right of privacy of others. Please sign in as per your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair or acting chair may terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order or over three minutes or personally directed at an individual. Any public comment?
We have one public comment. Shannon Rinker.
Hi, my name is Shannon Rinker, S-H-A-N-N-O-N-R-I-N-C-K-E-R. And tonight, I am honored to introduce myself as a new executive director of the Missoula Education Foundation. And I just wanted to take a moment to express my sincere excitement to take on this new position. And I was sharing with the executive board yesterday that I was very excited coming into this position, but I've been working at it a little over a month, and since that time, my excitement has grown exponentially. And I want to give a shout out to my student board and to my full-time board, just as far as the support that they've offered me. And I look forward to continuing relationships here in the district. That's it. Thank you. And I hope you understand I do need to excuse myself because I have an evening obligation to share out the Missoula Education Foundation message further. So, thank you.
All right, thank you for that, and welcome. Next up are reports and announcements. First up is Big Sky High School.
Hi, guys. I hope you guys are all doing well. Today, I will be sharing a little bit of an overview, and then Silas will be providing a little background of what's going on with our athletics department. First, our Big Sky FRC has put out a link to communities, to the community and to families around Big Sky to make sure that no Big Sky family goes without the season. Along with that, our Health Science Academy put up a giving tree to help our teachers with items they need for their classrooms. So far, it has been very successful, and we have bought almost half of the things that were requested. Along with that, our DECA is also doing a community giving project, but their goal is to raise money to provide a bag filled with clothes, hygiene products, cleaning supplies, and anything else deemed necessary during the long break period for anyone who just needs a little extra help. They have raised over $800 already by doing a mini photo shoot on December 8th with one of our teachers that has a photography business. And then they are going shopping this week for those items and the bags we put together. Back in November, our National Honor Society got together and created 42 bags that went to the Meadowlark and then families at Big Sky, which just had a couple foods and just some things that they would need over the Thanksgiving break for Thanksgiving. Along with that, our Link Crew is putting together a snowball fight, which is ultimately a really cool dodgeball tournament, but their goal is they have to bring three toys at least, a minimum, to participate. And all those toys will be donated to a local shelter for kids who would like them. They also are taking a $10 gate fee, and that money will also be donated back to the local community this year. Lastly, for just academics, our school is hosting their FAFSA night on Thursday in the theater, and this is for any senior planning to attend college after high school. And Silas will go over athletics.
Hello, I'm Silas Jones. I'm co-class president at Big Sky High School. For athletics, we had a great number of kids trial and join each team this year. Our wrestlers had their first meet this weekend, and it was very successful. Our varsity basketball teams head to Billings this weekend to play Skyview and West. Our swimmers also are heading to Kalispell for their first meet this weekend. Our dance team is hosting, sorry, a youth clinic next Thursday, and those who will participate will perform a routine during halftime of the boys' basketball game on the 19th. Lastly, our cheer team sent three cheerleaders to Hawaii to participate in the memorial parade as all-American cheerleaders. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Hellgate High School.
All right, hello, everyone. Happy early holidays. My name is Faith Yu. I'm the student body president at Hellgate High School. I'm going to start off with academics. So, sort of like Aspen talked about, we're currently hosting a FAFSA night, actually, at Hellgate High School, and we'll have another one this Thursday. We're also seeing a lot of scholarships being pumped out into our counselor, like Google classrooms, so it's great to see our students have these opportunities afforded to them.
And hello, everybody. I am Stella Harbert, and I'm the senior class president of Hellgate High School. And next, I'm going to talk about the sports. We are kicking off our winter season, and our basketball teams have been finalized, and they have their first game this Friday in Billings. And then also wrestling and our swimming has begun, and we look forward to watching them this season.
As for the arts, orchestra had a concert last night in collaboration with Washington Middle School. We kind of want to form these bridges with the younger groups as they will be matriculating into Hellgate into the later years. And we also saw choir do some community outreach with like a choir crawl, and they have some additional performances this holiday season.
And then just some additional extracurricular activities. Right now, student government is working on a mural competition. We have realized that there is some empty space in our school, and we just hope that this competition is open to everybody. We also hope to work with the ZAC and bringing in other clubs as well, so working directly with art club and just trying to involve more people, even if they aren't necessarily in student government, they still can be involved in what they do and feel welcome in our community.
Continuing on with student government, we're also going to be hosting a class cup. As some of you may know, we've regularly participated in the Golden Goat Tournament. Unfortunately, Hellgate will not be participating this year, so sort of to fill that hole, we're introducing the class cup once again to sort of have some friendly competition between grades and keep the spirit up. And then we've also been collaborating with the Hellgate Library. Hellgate was the school with the lowest amount of books checked out, and that's why we kind of wanted to increase reading over long breaks, especially Thanksgiving and holiday. So, we're going to be continuing that.
And then finally, we also are working on doing a gift card drive for this holiday season. We originally wanted to do things where they were like more materialistic items, and then we realized that that sometimes families may need help in other ways in the holiday season that does not just relate to gifts. So, we're working with some additional adults in the school where teachers can nominate a student or a student can nominate another person that they see struggling in their community, and we're able to supply them with gift cards. And we also have assigned people in the student government group during lunch, so not just the officers like us here, but where they are going to local businesses in our community, especially the ones close to Hellgate, and they're also able to donate very easily through a QR code, so we hope that we have a lot more donations this year. Thank you.
All right, we're just going to get our system back up so that we can get Sealy on. Are they on? Okay, Sealy, if you want to go ahead and start while we load up our projector again. Thank you.
They're saying that they can't hear us, so give me one second.
Okay. Our Zoom still works, correct? Even without that? Yeah, I just want to wait for Zoom.
Recording in progress.
Can you hear us now? Can they hear us? Oh, okay. Can you hear us now? Okay. Thank you for being with us while we figured out some technical issues. Next up, we'll move on to Sentinel High School.
My name's Nora Frame, and I'm here from Sentinel High School. To follow up on our last board report, Treasure Island and our theater department performed to record-breaking audiences. That was on November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Kind of continuing on and looking at other areas of art, for the first time since 2020, we're offering an AP Studio Art and Senior Study. These students are developing a digital portfolio of artwork that can help them with college and job placement and things like that. Additionally, the Montana Museum of Art and Culture is developing a tour just for them, and the ZAC has reserved the month of May for a student show. The art club created artwork to sell at the Sentinel Craft Show and made over $100. They are excited to be a part of the community and share their work with others. Our art department is also beginning the process of choosing a recipient for the Breyer Dig Scholarship. We have many seniors who have taken six or more art courses, which make them eligible for this award. For more academic-based update, our freshman English classes, or several of our freshman English classes are wrapping up their first research project as a cumulative assessment on the novel Night by Ellie Weasel. Topics for the research project are students selected from a wide range of options aligned with the Holocaust and World War II. Instead of like a traditional research paper, they also include an artifact that they create. This project teaches students how to use the library databases, determine relevance of articles, and parallel reading for reliability. It also shows them how to identify important information within an article and how to cite the materials that they choose for their topics. It also provides key time for our librarians and English teachers to work together. Kind of moving up to our junior English classes, some of our juniors are starting a career study, so they are individually paired up with a community member around Missoula in a job field that they're interested in. They're able to direct interviews and ultimately get to better understand the career of their choice. This project supports student, so it helps them come to making a decision after high school, which is super helpful. Our student government hosted Fireside Sentinel's annual semi-formal dance this past weekend. We had over 400 students attend, which was super great. As a club, we're also sponsoring three families for Christmas and hosting the upcoming talent show on December 19th. This has been going on for over 20 years, so we're super excited to be able to continue it. Kind of to wrap things up, our key club has partnered with the American Red Cross Organization to organize a blood drive that will be held on this Thursday, December 12th. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you very much. So next up, we'll move on to item seven, which is the consent agenda. So there is no board discussion for consent agenda items as these are routine items. And we will have two. We'll have an elementary motion and a high school motion. Is there a motion from elementary trustee to approve the consent agenda items? Moved by Trustee Walsh, seconded by Trustee Witcher. There is no board discussion, any public comment on the consent agenda items. CNN, all the elementary trustees in favor for approving the consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Next up is a high school motion. Is there a motion to approve the high school consent agenda items? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, seconded by Trustee Davy. Any no board discussion, any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the high school consent agenda, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up on item eight is new business, and this is information only. And first up is fiscal year '26 budget preview, and over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So, this is an early look at our general fund budget projections. Mike and I talked about a deeper look at the funding formula and how it works in January, but this is just sort of a glimpse at what our early projections are. Still, it's helpful, I think, to look at numbers. So we attached the funding components and then included some prior year numbers just to get perspective. First, the A and B, it means average number belonging, so that's an acronym we'll see quite a bit. What it means is we do a fall enrollment count, we do a spring enrollment count, we divide by two, and we multiply by a factor of 187 over 180. So it's really about student enrollment, but it's A and B, average number belonging. So that's a term of art you'll see quite a bit. The first few slides are showing the funding components, and these components are increased by 2.7% for FY '25 and 3% for FY '26. FY '26, next fiscal year is the year we're projecting. So we're in 2025 right now, so you'll see those funding components there. The basic entitlement is an allocation that all elementary districts, all high school districts get as part of the funding formula, and it just depends on how big your district is as to how much that basic entitlement is. So the basic number is reflected for the elementary, the middle school, and the high school, and then you can see the add-ons as the schools get larger, there's some boosts. So the elementary basic entitlement for elementary districts of 250 students or less is 60,732 next year at 3%. So these are, I'm going to buzz through these pretty quick and get to the calculation just to sort of show the comparison. Per A and B, so per enrollment, these are the numbers, again with that inflationary increase. You'll notice where my arrow's at, sort of this reduction factor. So for elementary district, as the population exceeds 1,000 students, then there's a reduction at 20 cents per student after the first thousand student. Yeah, that's the elementary side. In the high school, it's at 800, so there's sort of this declining dollar amount per student. But again, you can see those percentage increases. Again, part of the school funding formula, it's a calculation that we use, that we do, that we perform with these funding components and inflationary increases from the legislature. These are the additional funding components, and you'll see the ones that are per A and B. The one that we'll highlight is quality educator. That's tied to our quality educators, our certified staff, and that's a per-quality educator payment for next year of 3,783. And the reason I highlight that is that the anticipated funding formula from the governor's office is going to involve some changes to the quality educator payment that I'll talk briefly about. At-risk, this is a statewide allocation, and our share of that allocation is based upon our free and reduced population relative to the rest of the state. And then you'll see Indian Ed for All is per A and B. American Indian Achievement Gap is based upon our Native American students. Data for Achievements per A and B. And then the allowable cost payment is a factor of a number of things. That's why we have two of these slides. We were going to exclude this one because it's a little bit misleading. There's two A and B. There's two A and B, per A and B components, the instructional block grant, related services block grant. And then there's a disproportionate cost allocation. And that makes up the special ed allocation, so it's, it's sort of misleading to show it as a per A and B. So here it is without that listed. And then this is, this is just the math part, which I think helps. From a funding standpoint, you can just track the components. We have this year and are projected for next year, so you can sort of compare. You see the basic entitlement dropped pretty significantly. That's because for this year, we included a middle school basic entitlement for the Connect Academy. And we're not including that for next year. That's that 117,000 that you saw earlier. Per A and B, this represents 80% of the max budget calculation. You can see this is the biggest factor. It's, it's the, the, the dollars per student. That was that per A and B amount that we looked at. So that's, that's very much student-driven. You can see it's the biggest part. The special ed funding is listed, then the various components. Quality educator, I'll highlight again. It's going down because we, we have fewer quality educators in the district for purposes of that calculation. But it's a million six, almost a million seven in the elementary. The at-risk allocation's about the same. IEFA, AIAG, they're about the same, and same with data for achievement. So those are the 3% inflationary increases. Here, we figured about a 20 per-quality educator drop from this, this year to next year. And then you come to the max budget calculation. So again, you can just see how we're calculating what the maximum is that we, that you can adopt as a budget based upon those funding components. Our adopted budget is, in the elementary district, the same as the max budget for this year and anticipated next year. We're showing the adopted budget at max. That involves a levy that's listed there, an estimated levy. Now, these are all estimates, so there's plenty of time for things to change. Our A and B is an estimate. We looked at our fall enrollment count and then project to the spring based upon how it's transitioned in the past. And you can see that there's some growth on the elementary or the K6 piece and a little decline on the 7th, 8th, and A and B. The reason we separate those out is the 7th and 8th graders get the higher, they get the high school per A and B amount. And the K6 gets the lower elementary A and B amount. We show a levy for this year of 74, 761. We actually ran a levy at 105,000, that was passed. And this is when we had some changes in the funding formula after we set our levies. So we're sitting on about 30,000 of approved levy that we can apply to this year. So that's been voted and approved even though we couldn't use it. So that's where the high school sits. This is an increase of about 1.1 million. And really, this exercise is just to sort of show you in a couple of the follow-up slides just where we're at out of the gate relative to where we were in the past few years. And it, it's, it's, it looks a little better. The high school side, similar information, per A and B is the largest component. The number of quality educators that we count is down 15 on this projection. Otherwise, the, the growth is, is right with the inflationary increase. A couple of nuances here. The, for, for this year, for 2025, our max budget is greater than our adopted budget. And this is how we originally portrayed it, but the, we actually adopted that max budget. We were able to take TIF remittance that we built into the reserves and boost our over-based levy by the amount voted at 403 plus 71,000 of TIF funds. So we did get to the full max budget of 36,538. Then going to next year, a little, this is a little oddity in state law, but you can see the max budget is 37,231, and we're adopting above maximum. And this was a change several legislative, legislative sessions ago where school districts with declining enrollment could still adopt your, your inflationary increases. And so with the 3% increase to the funding components, we could still adopt those inflationary increases despite declining enrollment. The, the, the rub, though, is that the over-based levy is higher. You see that 780, that's, that's about as high as we've seen in the high school for quite some time. So when we make the correction to last year's 2025 adopted budget to this projection, it's a million two, or sorry, a million 137 increase, or a 3.1% increase that we'll see on some follow-up slides. So this is, this is just data that's showing over time, one, our general fund budget. So what it's been over time, what our A and B has been over time, and the changes to those two, two components. And, and so you can follow the, the graph and you see the significant growth in enrollment and budgets until COVID hit and our, and we had that almost 400 student, or 400 A and B drop right here to 2022. Our budgets since then have remained pretty relatively flat with some, some minor increases. Most of the increases come as just part of the inflationary adjustment at the legislative level. And, and then you can see down below, just in the data points, the A and B change, the drop of 378, which is really unprecedented, and then some slight boost and a decrease, decrease. And then the increase projected for next year. And a lot of this increase really has to do with the early LITRC program and implementation. Then similar information on the high school side. That, our high school district didn't see as much of a, a drop as the elementary district following COVID. But again, you can just sort of track the, the general fund change and the A and B change. And, and then it, it tracks where those budgets are too. So we had some pretty significant growth in the high school enrollment, and that led to some budgetary growth. These next two slides are, show the change in the, in the general fund. And, and so you can see the, what's been voted as part of the increase in budget and then how much the increase in budget has been. And I think really as much as anything, if we look over the last few years, this current year, if, you know, $560,000 increase, then prior to that, a million, and then 809, and then a decrease of 642 during that horrible post-COVID or mid-COVID year. And if we can get to the million one, then that really does look more even keel, I guess you would say. But there is a voted levy that's attached to that. And you can see over time, the years where there's no copper-colored graph, that's where we didn't run over-based levies. There were no voted levies. And then on the high school side, we show these as over-based levy amounts instead of voted levies because the, in the middle of the graph, we have increases of 152, or sorry, over-based levies of 152,000 and 107,000. Those weren't voted levies, but those were increases in the over-based levy by virtue of us reducing permissive levies in other budgeted funds. So that's something that, that can happen. We did that in those two years just to take advantage of the growth. And you can see, the high school has experienced really small growth since, in 2018, really through 2022. Just real flat enrollment, very little growth, and then the big spike in 2023. And even so, the, the over-based levies, really, other than 2023, have not been significant. Last year was, 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 is, is close to as high as it was in the 2023 year. And then the projected for this coming year would be quite a bit higher. And again, it goes back to adopting budgets above max. So it's really on the over-based levy where we had experienced that increase. Before I leave those slides, just anticipated governor's budget that he's presenting to the legislature would, would call for a, a doubling of the quality educator payment. So I'm highlighting there the 1.6 million in the elementary and 1.2 million in the high school if districts meet certain base salary increases. So this is motivation here is to pull the state out of the lowest base salary across the country and by focusing really on the quality educator payment. So this is really early, you know, the legislature hasn't even met, so there's, can be lots of changes. But it's, it's sort of a factor to keep in mind relative to what these budgets look like. So you can look at the, those graphs that we're looking at where the, here on the elementary, the budgetary increase of 1.1 million with a 450,000 voted levy. And the, if the quality educator payment was doubled, what was that, 1.167 million dollars, 1.2 million? And then the high school, another 1, 1.2 million. So it would double what we're projecting right now really in both districts if it comes to fruition. So those sort of changes would certainly factor into the board's evaluation of voted levy and that type of thing. So very early, but just, we'll be diving deeper into this discussion. And Mike and I talked about January is a kickoff for budget levy committee meetings to start. So we'll be climbing back into it. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from a trustee? Trustee Mercer.
So the FY '26 A and B projections, what are they from?
Yeah, so we took our fall, fall enrollment count, and then we looked at sort of a five-year historical change from fall to spring. And then we adjusted it because we, we had some oddities. So we sort of pulled out the, the weird ones and left in the, the, what's been normal. What we usually experience is pretty consistent fall to spring and K8, and then this 90-student drop on the high school side. And so we usually see the high school drop and the, and the elementary, middle school stay pretty steady.
Any other questions or comments? Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Yeah, I was confused exactly where, where I should be looking or what I should look for when you talked about the elementary max budget and you said that we were no longer putting the connect enrollment in there. Is that what you said?
Yeah, if you go to the elementary back, max budget, for FY '25 under basic entitlement, we have 919,000. And then for 2026, we're down to 816,000. And so that change is really the middle school basic entitlement amount, which is this 117 right up here. That's, that's FY '25, we had 117,000 of basic entitlement for middle school Connect Academy that we don't include for FY '26, which would be 121,000. So that's, that's the difference. Yeah.
Trustee Mercer.
Can you, so why, can you do the next, what's the next?
Yeah, so, so our fall enrollment count for Connect Academy in the middle school was 12.75, and we need to be at 20 on average between the fall and the spring count. So that'd mean spring would have to grow to 25 students to get the 20-student average for, to qualify for basic entitlement.
Because it's mostly high school now?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Any other trustee questions or comments? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none. Next up is the open trustee position and notable election dates. And so if this is information only again, and I'll turn it back to Mr. McHugh.
All right, so this is, the attachment is something we, the board, or we share with the board every year. It's summarized really well under the background section, just looking at the open trustee seats. That's, that's a lot of the point of this calendar, which I'll pull over. So this, the dates at the top are the statutory dates. So the election dates they're described as, as in the budget dates. So those are statutory. So those dates we build into this calendar down below. And when we look at tonight's meeting and we show general fund and levy projections, just because we didn't list that in future board meetings doesn't mean it's not going to happen. It, it will happen. We just, we're trying to highlight the main points. And, and really, the main point is what's in the background, and that's that the candidate will have open trustee seats. The opportunity is December 12th for, for candidates to put in to be a trustee. If you look under February 11th, board meeting on this calendar, there's, we have three elementary and high school, K-12 trustees. And then we have District A high school position that's open for a three-year term. That's the Lolo position. Then the Hellgate one that we haven't talked about really yet, but that one's, that's a two-year term. So whoever's appointed to that position has to run in May. So it's a real kind of tight window and kind of experience that. And then the Seeley Swan one would also be, have to run this, this, this May, and it's for one year, and then it's open again. So it's just how the statute works. Otherwise, we're just incorporating the various statutory dates within the, our board meeting dates going forward just so you have, have that on your, on your calendar, looking, looking out, looking down the road.
Any questions or comments from a trustee? None? All right, any public comment? Seeing none. So next up is personnel negotiations. It's to approve, first up is to approve the policy revision for first reading, and this is back to you, Mr. McHugh.
Yeah, so we've attached the policy 7510. This is just some old language, and this came up with our auditors here recently where we're going through our capitalized fixed asset list. And it's just an unwieldy volume of fixed assets and spreadsheet pages. So what our auditor supports is a boost to 25,000 to capitalize assets effective July 1st, 2023, which would be the audit period FY '24. So that's, that's the point of, of this change.
Any questions from a trustee? Trustee Witt.
You knew it was coming. Two questions, Pat. The first is, what are typical like dollar amounts for approvals? Because a lot of times capitalization policies tie into when there's an additional level of approval.
Board approval?
Yeah, like board approval or just even internal, right? Like, because it's never to a point where one person can do it, really. Like, that's pretty uncommon. So that's the first question, is how does this tie in with our approval levels? And the second is, what about groups of assets? Speaking, you know, as an auditor, I, I can't tell in here for sure if it includes like groups because what I don't like is someone, well, the district goes and buys, you know, a couple, like maybe 100 Chromebooks or something, and then that gets over 25,000. Is that now being capitalized because the group was over? And I would want it to be no. So just want to make sure that's clarified and maybe think about writing something in there about groups don't count.
Yeah, and we don't count groups. And back to your first question, what we require is for any asset that's $5,000 or more and will continue to require at least two quotes before the purchase is made. And then the capital assets of that amount are required to be entered into the accounting system as a requisition that then follows the approval process to the supervisor making the purchase. So it, and that process really is, stands for, you know, our preference, all purchases. It doesn't happen that way because... It doesn't happen that way because some things don't happen through the requisition and PO process. But but the capital assets, well, anything over 5,000 would go that way and would continue to go that way and have require supervisory approval. And then the, yeah, we haven't grouped assets. So what we what we typically see for for capital assets are equipment through the O and M department. I mean, that's what we will typically see. And in a in a board approval fashion, state law requires board approval for for purchases that are 80,000 or more because they're bid. And we'll go through a formal bidding process. And even if we don't formally bid things, like we're in the process of purchasing some Toyota Sienna vans, and those are fall below the bid limits, but we're looking at upwards of six to eight quotes, just to confirm and compare various packages and costs and that type of thing, so.
There's a quick follow up. Would you be willing to put in the sentence where it says the district will capitalize all assets with a value over 25,000 to all individual assets? Just to clarify, to make sure that no one ever thinks that we're doing group?
Works for me.
All right.
That works for you guys.
Any other questions from a trustee? This is a full board motion. Is there a motion to for the recommendation with the edited last sentence? Moved by trustee Witt, second by trustee Wake. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? CNN, all those in favor for approving the recommendation with the edited last sentence, any please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Thank you for that. And next up is to approve the personnel report. So we will have two, an elementary and a secondary. And so I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Mr. Lebowski.
Thank you. I have nothing to add. Pretty self explanatory.
Is there any questions? First up, we'll do elementary motion. Are there any questions from a trustee? Trustee Witcher.
Quick question. So Keela Cross resigned, and so a new art so a new art teacher, was it someone who hours were reduced or anything like that due to budget cutbacks, someone brand new?
It was someone brand new.
Cool. Second question, the Lowell art teacher position that had a permanent sub at it for a while, has that been filled? Can you speak to that at all?
It's not posted anymore, so I'm assuming it's been filled, but I don't know that for sure. I know it's not posted, so.
So if I got this right, across the district, all art teachers that were originally affected by the budget cutbacks last year found new art positions within the district between Willard. Is that safe to say? I'm just.
No, I don't. I don't think so. I think there's maybe one or two that that did not.
Okay. Just was trying to.
I could I could get back to you on that, but I don't think so.
And then this new Ms. Ryan is a new art teacher in the district?
Yes.
Cool. Can't wait to meet them.
Yeah.
Any other questions? CNN, is there a trustee to elementary trustee to approve the personnel report? Moved by trustee Witt, second by trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments? Keela's now in the Native American Student Services Department. All right, any public comment? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor of approving the elementary personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is the high school element, the high school elementary, the high school personnel report. Anything to add there? Nothing? Is there a motion to approve the high school personnel report? Moved by trustee Wake, second by vice chair Walker Andrews. Any trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? CNN, all trustees in favor of approving the high school personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to approve an out of country travel request, and this is over to Assistant Superintendent Shattick.
All right, so the Big Sky High School International Club is heading to Italy, France, and Spain this summer for nine days. And so we're asking you to approve that.
All right, any questions from a trustee? CNN, is this is a high school motion? Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Davie, second by trustee Wake. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? CNN, all trustees in favor of the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous, oh, trustee Mercer, are you? Oh, unanimous to all trustees present.
I'm all in favor of the art of travel.
I think they need a chaperone. All right, next up is item nine, which is board of trustees. And first up is to declare the high school trustee District C vacant, and we're going to start the process of filling the vacancy on the board. And so we do have a letter resignation from trustee Wallach and a timeline in the agenda packet. And so we will just need a motion from a high school trustee to approve the resignation and declare the seat vacant and authorize the administration to initiate the process for appointment. Is there a motion from a high school board trustee? Moved by vice chair Walker Andrews. Is there a second? Second by trustee Davie. Is there any questions or comments from a trustee?
Where can we find the boundaries of where this position?
On the website.
On MCPs website? Okay.
Yes. All right. And any final trustee comments? I just asked that. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor for the recommendation of opening the seat and calling the seat vacant and initiating process? Please, wait, did I say? We already had a motion, yes. Unanimous to all trustees present, correct? Next up is topic is the Montana School Boards Association update, and this is information only, and it's over to Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
So I've actually asked someone else to talk to it more specifically, but I wanted to say that at the Montana Conference of Educational Leadership this last fall, I noticed a number of boards getting Golden Gavel awards. And this is when members of the board participate in a lot of the trainings that MTSBA offers. And I made the mistake of saying, we'll never be able to do that because there's 11 of us, and how could we possibly? And then Ann Wake said, oh, but we got it before. So I'm going to turn it over to either of you two, I can't remember who's going to speak, to tell us what we need to do to get this award.
In case you weren't here, I was ready. Okay, so to earn the Golden Gavel, we all have to do, I think it's 13 hours?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. 12 hours of training on the MTSBA website, which feels daunting. But if you attended Mcel, that's how many hours do we get for Mcel? I'll check. I'll check and let everyone know. But the trainings are actually really easy to just put on and then listen to in the background. So there's one that I watched today about budgets. And then every Thursday, there's a Think Tank Thursday at noon. And the last two have been really interesting, discussing the STARS Act, the governor's budget, and the legislative session coming up this spring. So I usually listen to things at two times speed, but when Lance Melton is speaking, it is very fast. So if you are thinking, I'll never be able to, it's riveting and quick. So you log in to you log into using your MCPs email to mtsba.org, click video training resources, and then they're really nicely laid out by topic. You'll watch something, and then the key piece to earning the gavel is to email Wendy Brendan, who we get lots of emails from her all the time, you can just reply, that you've watched a certain training and the time that it was, and she'll add it to your hours.
So it's really just one a month?
What does the district get? If it's just a Golden Gavel?
It's just an award for being good guys, and it signifies, I'll quote, that the trustees are acting as a coordinated body with an unequivocal commitment to training and improving. And I guess I was I'm actually pushing for this, not just because of the award, but because we are a big board, and we have a lot of newish members, and we're about to have elections for lots of seats. And I think it just behooves us all to take every advantage that we can to figuring how to keep things going as well as they have been.
I was on the MTSBA board for 13 years, and I so I got a lot of training while I was doing all that. And I never found one training that wasn't beneficial to what we do here. And I think that if we are very dedicated to what we what our goal is here, that taking these videos is like enhancing what we do here. It's not taking anything away from it, it's just making it better. And it gives you an opportunity to provide other ideas to other board members. And I just felt it very helpful to do it. Some of it can be a little daunting. I mean, Lance can be very, how do I want to say? The first time I heard Lance speak was when I went to delegate assembly right after they passed the budget in nine in 2013. And he talked about figures the whole time for an hour and a half. And I thought, oh, my God, what am I getting myself in here to? Because he just he can he has so much information wrapped up in his head that it's very difficult for him to share.
He's our Pat McHugh.
Completely. Oh, no, Pat has mosquitoes. I said, so that's been our Pat and I's joke ever since I got on the board. Pat has mosquitoes, and I just say, I'm going to bring my bug spray next time, and I'm going to spray him. Because I found that people have some people have the capacity to listen to a lot of information and be able to absorb it. I'm not one of those. I can take in a lot of information, but there's other things in that information that I miss. So I always want to be able to go back and figure out what I missed and what is what can do me or us the best possible outcome. So I think that is important. I was very glad when we earned a Golden Gavel for the first time. Nobody had been interested in taking any kind of classes, and I tried to make sure that that, you know, you ought to do this. It's very good for us to do this. It's very, I mean, we want our children to go out and learn everything they can. We don't want to have say that, oh, you don't have to do that, or you don't have to do that. I think everybody is learning all the time. So my recommendation is is that you take that hour, hour and a half, and you listen to the videos, and maybe there's something you can garner out of them. I know I can. That's all I have to say.
Yep, nope, and we're open for any questions or comments. I know when I first became a trustee, I watched a lot of the videos and talked a lot with them too, so just FYI. Any other comments or questions? Any public comments? Oh, trustee Witcher.
If we're going to do this, we all have to do it, okay? Because 12 hours is a lot for me, not going to lie. So I want to know, if I do this and someone else doesn't, telling you.
My question with that is, what about our vacant seats? Like the vacant seat, right? So if we get somebody in February who's here February to May, do they need to do 12 hours February to May?
I don't know, but I'll I'll work a deal.
Okay.
What happens is is that as each board member does, the hours accumulate because we are all doing it. So even if that board member can't or isn't able to do that, we can pretty much cover all those hours to get that.
So I can do one hour, you can do 11?
That's Meg.
I'm just joking. I'm in. And if you told me to jump off a bridge, I would do it.
No, no, please don't do that. No, I just with if you divide out all the hours that it is, it we can, there's a you can do this. It's just a matter of us saying that, yes, that's what we're willing to do. And having a new board member be under that kind of pressure is not really fair to them. So I would not recommend a saying, oh, and by the way, you have to put in all these hours to get your get us to a Golden Gavel by next October, when they may not be here after the time that they're on the board. So I would not pressure them to do that. But I think that we are all grown up people that we can do this together. That's what what we're all about here, doing it together.
Trustee Walsh?
You know, and they actually really are so interesting, too, those Think Tank Thursdays. This the last two, they were talking all about the upcoming legislative session and how the one of the Senate House, the Senate Committee was kind of demoted. They're only meeting two days a week, not three days a week, but that's better for us as advocates because we'll be able to make those sessions to testify more effectively. But, you know, it was interesting.
Think Tank Thursdays are important because as we get closer into the legislative session, we're going to find out things that we need to be responsive to. And if you're on Think Tank Thursday, then you always know exactly what's going to be coming up that we may need to have testimonials about. So I highly suggest you take that opportunity on Think Tank. I think it's during lunch hour, in fact. It's 12 to 1. So it's not like it you're you're going to have to make a special time for it. So if you just take the time to listen to it on Thursday at from 12 to 1, you'll be good.
I've also noticed that our administrators are often on there as well.
If we are planning to do this as a board, would it be overly complicated to ask Tracy to add Think Tank Thursdays to our calendars and put a link into our calendars?
I think we could do it on our own.
Okay.
I don't want to overwork our awesome Tracy. Any other trustee comments or questions? Any public comment? CNN, the time is now 7:06, and we are adjourned. Thank you.